Chris, I'll be ready. You ready?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's special city council meeting. If you would please stand with the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the special meeting this evening, we will only be conducting just this agenda item and nothing else. There will not be any standard citizens' concerns or anything. So with that, we will get on to the item that's in front of us, which has to do, and I will go ahead and give a quick explanation before turning over to staff and for a presentation. What we're here for this evening has nothing to do with the project as far as any, you know, approval of the zoning or such. That's all taken place. The only thing that we're here for is because of the type of Lytec financing they're looking at, which is non-competitive. It did not require a letter of support from us, but we do receive a letter from the state that gives us a 15-day window to object to it if we wish. With that, that will be basically what is going to be discussed this evening, is do we want to object to that financing? With that, I would then turn it over to staff.
Amber Vogon, interim city manager. You have a few items on your dais. One of them is the letter that we received from the Kansas Development Finance Authority of the notification that they were going to issue bonds. Another is an email from the Kansas Development Finance Authority that just explains a little bit more about the issuance of those bonds. And then the third one is a map of the traffic accident locations and high-volume locations for PD calls, so that you can kind of see where those are spread throughout the city as we're discussing bringing in more population. And then we have Bobby Joe Lucas here, who is part of the developer for Cornerstone, and she will be giving a presentation on the project.
Go ahead and turn on your mic. Note up.
There we go.
Perfect. Great. Good evening, everyone. Bobby Joe Lucas, Cornerstone Associates, Cornerstone Housing Group from Omaha, Nebraska. Do you need my address?
No.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and council members for allowing me to come and make a presentation at such short notice. I recognize there's a 15-day time period in here, so thanks for being available. I wanted to provide a little bit more information on the project. I know this has been in front of council before with regard to rezoning that happened in October of '23, and site plan and planning have been submitted to the city, and we will still continue to go through the process until everything gets approved. But in the interim, I recognize this is a traditional, what we call like a Tefr hearing or something, where they identify that bonds are being issued and council needs to approve. So I wanted to give a little bit detail again for those who may not remember the project that we're proposing. We are proposing a project that will be at the southwest corner of K-7 and I-70, and it does now have a name or an address to it, which is 300 South 130th Street. And if you wouldn't, I'm not certain who's doing the slides there. Thank you. Thanks. So a little bit of overview on this. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, we are looking at building 204 units of attainable housing, both for individuals and for families. This is going to go on 11.91 acres. We purchased about 21 acres, but we have divided that, done a lot split, and only rezoned the eastern side of that, which is approximately 11.91 for our three or multifamily. Again, that happened October of '23. We are proposing six three-story walk-up buildings and then a separate clubhouse and amenity room. The financing consists of the 4% low-income housing tax credits in addition to the bonds that we've made a request from KDFA for. The issuance itself should be somewhere around $40 million. It's going to depend on when we close, but technically only $25 million of these bonds will be tax-exempt. The difference will be just a regular, traditional taxable loan. And I wanted to point out that when we went through this process, we are within the neighborhood revitalization program, so we were eligible to take advantage of the five-year, 75% tax abatement through that NRP program. Just to give a quick overview, and I recognize this is about as current as the Google Maps show, because Dominion's not all developed on there, but this is the southwest corner of K-7 and I-70. And even though this picture depicts the entire 21 acres, we are only redeveloping on the east side of that. The western side, the remaining, just about 10 acres, we're just going to hold on to. At some point, it may be we're considering townhomes or something to that effect, but it's not really on our calendar at the moment to do anything with that. And it's still zoned ag, so we would have to come in front of everybody again for rezoning for that. This identifies then on that eastern side, this is our preliminary site plan. It may need, through civil engineering and architecture and everything else, a few minor modifications to it, but this is what we're proposing with regard to the building layouts and the garages. We've buffered the entire perimeter of the property with the garages, which helps for a couple of things. One, just for sound buffering, simply because it is on a very busy hard corner. And then secondly, should we develop, we've left some space between the garages on the western side that will allow for a drive-through through the middle of the garages, as well on the southern side, to provide connectivity if and when that western side gets developed. This is an elevation. Again, as I mentioned, it's a traditional walk-up. How it's designed right now is hardy stone, or I'm sorry, cement siding, in addition to some stone and some brick. Now, I'm going to share with you that the articulation of how the brick is showing on here will change, because we'd like to have a little more variance to it, and our architect sometimes needs some assistance with some creativity on how to get the designs to fit more attractively. But I did want to point out, they are all open breezeways. They're three-story walk-ups. Just some details again, 240, 204 units. We are proposing 48 one-bedroom homes, 102 two-bedroom homes, and 54 three-bedroom homes. The amenities themselves, within the entire project, we do have onsite management. We have 24-hour on-call maintenance, and in a project of this size, we're going to have two managers and also three maintenance that would be on staff full-time. Clubhouse, which would have or incorporate the offices that are available, in addition to a fitness center, a business center, centralized mailrooms, and then it always has a fireplace and community space just to be shared. And the residents can also rent it if they want to have a function for their family, but it's not available for anyone that does not live there. And it will also be secured access. The unit amenities themselves, the open floor plan, hard-surface countertops. The kitchens are fully equipped with Energy Star-rated appliances. A number of years ago, we chose to equip every single one of our units with washers and dryers for many reasons, simply because either A, they didn't have them, or B, they would be bringing in those that may be faulty, and all of a sudden you end up with a third-floor leak because something was old on an appliance. So that's something that we are happy to be able to provide. Plank flooring throughout the apartment, but four carpet in the bedrooms. Internet hookup in every one of the rooms. Window coverings. And then depending upon where your unit is located, there's either a patio or balcony, of which each has about 20-square-foot-size closet for storage. Outdoor themselves, I know it was hard to see on the site plan, but the landscaping of the ground, we will have quite a bit of buffering within the garages, but inside the interior area, we really plan on making that look like a beautiful green space, simply because it's a high-traffic area, and it's going to be very visible. With this being a family project, we will have playgrounds and tot lots, several outdoor grill stations, patio tables, and a lot of them will also have a couple of those covered seating ones in case someone wants to rent it, an outdoor pavilion for an event. And we will have a dog park and a dog run, because that's a high priority for all of our family members. I know there's some questions with regard to who is eligible to live in these homes. I identified here what the 2024 rents are, or the limits. These rents are set by HUD based on the average area median income for each county. They are subject to change every year. More often than not, there may be an increase. However, on occasion, and I know only once have we had a decrease, and I've been doing this 24 years, but I did want to identify, we are targeting residents at the 30%, 40%, and 60% area median income. I did provide the 50 in there merely because when income limits are set, as an example for Wyandotte County, it's identifying that a 40-person, or I'm sorry, a four-person area median income household is 103. And so just to help explain how they calculate this, Wyandotte County is 103,000. If you go to the line which reads "four-person household" and scroll over to the right and go under 50% area median income, that is roughly about half of that 103,000. And so what we're trying to do is target those that are at the 30%, 40%, and 60% incomes. And I want to point out that each bedroom, you're eligible to have two persons in each bedroom. So for a three-bedroom, you're able to have six household members in your three-bedroom home. And children that are non-working children qualify as household members. But anyone who has an active income, even up to some college students, depending upon if they're a full-time student or if they're working, their income does qualify and does count towards their eligibility to move in. So there are some criteria with regard to what I would call dependent children that are older than the age of 18. For 2024, as mentioned, the income limits change. The rent limits are subject to change also, based on the percentage that they qualify under. For an example, I'll just go across for the up to 60% area median incomes. The one-bedroom homes, if you make 60% of that 103,000, your rent would be $1,680. The two-bedroom home would be $1,392. The three-bedroom would be $1,608. What I don't have identified here, because it's subject to change also, is this is their maximum rent. So what that means is, let's say utilities for a one-to-bedroom home is $100. What we do then is we have to subtract that $100 from that maximum rent of $1,680. Therefore, their rent is $1,580, and they have that $100 allowance that they've saved to pay their own utilities. And that goes, the same thing with the two bedrooms and the three bedrooms. And it's hard for me to say today what I know the rents, what the rents or the utilities are going to be by the time this opens in 2026, early part there, but as of 2024, these are the maximum rents.
Can I interrupt you? Can we go back to that?
Yeah.
Can I real quickly just ask you, is that a misprint for the one-bedroom home at 60%?
Oh, my gosh. Thank you for catching that. Well, that would be my error.
That's why I didn't trust my eyes. That's why I turned around and looked at the board here.
Nope. I have what they should be, so that's my mistake. For the one-bedroom on the 60%, $1,0160. So it's the one-bedroom that's off. Thank you for catching that. Two-bedrooms, $1,392. Three-bedrooms, $1,608. And then I know that there was some question that we were thinking, I know a lot of people aren't familiar with our management company. We opened Beacon Management back in 2006. We've been doing this as a company, Cornerstone Associates and Cornerstone Housing Group, for 34 years, I think 34 years, of which I'll be 25 years of that 34. Over those period of time, we've always paid third-party management companies to manage our properties. What we found back up until 2020, 2006, they always collect their fee, but they don't always guarantee that they have a manager onsite or a maintenance, or if properties are getting repaired for whatever reason. And we got frustrated with the fact that we're getting unpaid bills, we're getting properties that are in disarray, et cetera. So that's when we made the decision to create our own management company. We've been fortunate enough to have wonderful people. The company has grown significantly, and I would say we're probably 70% of their portfolio because they also do third-party management. We have several properties that are already in Kansas, and so we have a great relationship with Kansas Housing Resource Corp. And if you, I would say, Olytha's probably the closest one, if anyone ever wanted to drive by, or you could look on our website. That's a senior project. Baser is a senior project. We had one in Shawnee, gosh, I would say we probably sold that one 10 or 12 years ago, but we had another senior project there. We do a lot of, senior has a high demand, but we're recognizing more and more that workforce housing has really come into play, and communities are being more welcome to providing workforce housing. And so we just really have a great mix of whether it's senior or it's family homes. But I wanted to share that, as mentioned here, having this special meeting and on short notice, we're able to get to any property quickly. It takes me two and a half hours. If there's a problem at any one of our properties, I'm able to get here. Our management company's in our office. We have weekly meetings that discuss the vacancies, new applications, what's going on with each one of the properties. If there's something that goes awry, I know about it. I don't have to handle it, but I'm made aware of it. So there's a great communication and a great trust with everyone that we have that manages our properties. And so I want, even though we are out-of-state developers, we're very hands-on in the state of Kansas, every project in every state for that matter. But I mean, the advantage is we can get to these properties if there's an issue quite I would be happy to answer any questions that anybody has with regard to what we're proposing. Yes, ma'am?
What might be the effects on the school district?
Honestly, I can't answer that for you, and the reason I say that is because I don't know if any of the members that move in will have younger children that will attend, whether it be the elementary or the senior. Oftentimes, you may end up with a husband and a wife, or a husband and a wife and an older child that may be in college, or you may end up with a husband and a wife and a caregiver, then just simply because it could be at any age. So if I were to predict, to say that every family or household that moves in is going to have children, I wouldn't be comfortable saying that. One would expect that having three bedrooms, there would be some children in there.
Do you have an average of what your other properties do? Ballpark of the, it's usually, you know, 20% kids, 30%?
I was gonna say, the largest majority of our portfolio is senior housing, so those that have family, oh, gosh. I would have to ask our management company. I apologize, I wasn't prepared for that answer. I hadn't even thought of it, someone being asked that, so. But I'd be happy to provide information.
I'm gonna interrupt a second before we start asking questions. I was gonna open it up for the public to be able to come up if anybody wishes to speak. So please hang loose, but I'm sure there'll be plenty of questions for you.
Absolutely.
Is there anybody from the public who wishes to address this item? If you'd like to, please come forward.
Name and address, please. Hi there. My name's Ron Johnson, 13286 Davis Avenue, Ward 4. I work, I live in the Cedar Ridge Development. That's real close by there. And so I guess I'm, got selected to represent the neighborhood, but, and unfortunately, a lot, I just found out about this two hours ago, this meeting, so it was really thrown in. So a lot of people couldn't be there, but I can assure you that anyone that I talk to and the ones here just are against it, mainly traffic is a big thing. Traffic, the K-7, K-7, Kansas Avenue is just getting bad. It's getting, you know, it's very busy. And I just don't know, yeah, I just don't know if this is the way we want to grow Bonner. That's just what I don't. So, and I do, I think, I know they have a lot of senior, which I would be for senior. If they were making this a senior housing development, I would not have an issue with it, but the development that's being addressed or whatever, and it seems like when we had this meeting in October, it was not supposed to be this lower-income housing, and I don't know when that turned to make it that, but it didn't seem like it was supposed to be that, although I was opposed to that, too. I'm kind of opposed to, it's a pretty good intersection of Bonner and coming off I-70 into 7, and that's the first thing you see all the time. I know, you know, the outbuildings are there and everything like that, but I just don't think it looks good for the city personally. And so I know the neighborhood, the Cedar Ridge neighborhood is not for it. So that's really all I have. If you have any other questions, I didn't really have much to say when I come up here, so. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
Mayor, council members, I'm Greg Kendall, president of the Wyandotte Economic Development Council and a resident of Kansas City, Kansas. I did put together some remarks, so I'll just kind of share my remarks here with you. I'm here in neutral support of this proposed 204-unit housing project using 4% low-income housing tax credits for Lytec. We have a housing problem in Wyandotte County. We have a housing problem everywhere in the Kansas City market. At all socioeconomic levels, we have a housing shortage. This development helps address that challenge, particularly for certain segments within the community. And we applaud the developer for their work in this area and for pursuing funding at the state level. In other parts of the county, YDC and I have been ardent supporters of the use of Lytec as a financing tool to drive residential development in areas where there's little to no investment and in areas where there's low household income. A question only you all can answer is if you think market-rate apartments providing the same level of amenities and quality are more desirous in this area without the use of tax credits and the income limitations, and if you'd like to continue conversations with Lytec in general. The median household income in Bonner Springs, as you all know, is just a little more than $82,000, with about 7% of the population working full-time below the poverty level in the last five-year American Community Survey results. Bonner Springs has the highest median household income among the three cities in Wyandotte County. At the proposed maximum 60% income limit for a four-person household, the household income limits for those units is really no more than about $62,000. That's pretty close to the county median income, which is why I think it's really easy for us to support Lytec development in other parts of the county, and perhaps not maybe as easy here in Bonner Springs, where you all have a much, much higher household income. When I look at monthly maximum rents, my head goes to the fact that the goal is not to spend more than 30% of your gross income on mortgage or rent. At $25 an hour, you're making about $52,000 a year gross, and at 30% of that, you shouldn't pay more than about $15,600 a year on rent, or about $1,300 a month. On their unit type, you qualify for a number of units. This is not Section 8 housing. This is not free housing. That's still a significant monthly rent. Please know that we do not see Lytec housing as creating poverty housing either. That's another common misnomer when we talk about the reasons to use or not to use Lytec. It often provides housing for those who are just starting out in their careers, young families, folks who are doing a lot of great work in and around our county and our community. But the income qualifiers are limitations, and that's something that you all need to be aware of as you make this decision, and whether you're getting the development you want at this location at the entrance of the community. I'll reiterate, we have a quality housing problem. Done well, this could be a great asset for the community, and your decision will help the state know if you want them to proceed with the tax credits and if Cornerstone Housing Group wants to move forward as well. I apologize, I'm not necessarily coming forward and telling you yes or no, which I often do today, I'm very much neutral, but I do appreciate your time, consideration, and the decision that you all are asked to make. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. Anyone else would like to speak?
Stormy Vit, 345 South, 132nd Terrace.
Let's see, that mic will bend if you need to bring it a little closer to you there.
Thank you. Cedar Ridge is the rest. I would just be curious to know if the traffic study was completed. I believe we were told last year when we came to the Planning Commission meeting that there would have to be a traffic study before this moved forward.
The traffic study was completed, and it showed no modifications were needed, and that's due to the fact that they have a right-in, right-out on K-7. So if you're coming from the north, you can turn right in or right out to get on to K-7, and then some of their traffic would come onto Kansas Avenue, of course, but KDA approved of the traffic study.
So if the development moves forward, they have their own entrance right off of K-7?
I don't think it's their own entrance. I think it's commercial drive.
Okay. And then where would they go in from there?
On commercial drive, they would have an entrance to their property.
Oh, okay.
But commercial drive is a right-in, right-out on K-7.
Are there also going to be other entrances, or is that the only one?
Commercial drive would be their entrance and exit to the property, but they could go either way from there.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none, I will now move to the council. Normally, I would ask for a motion, but I think because of, I think there's going to be a lot of questions before a lot of people even want to put a motion on the floor. I will mention this also, if you are thinking about putting that motion forward at some point in time, please make sure we suggest that you also include a reason why you'd like to have that resolution of denial. We need to supply that to the state as well, not just a yes or no, but why. So with that, I will open the floor, and we'll start down there with you, Mr. Shannon. I assume, go ahead and step back up. I'm sure there's gonna be some questions.
Thanks a lot. Julie, I think it is Julie, right?
Bobby Joe.
Bobby Joe? Okay, where did I come up with Julie? I'm very sorry. It's close. Bobby Joe, you mentioned the, you're only developing the eastern portion of that, or that's the way you're going, but I felt like the rest of the property, and that was just my feeling, was a little vague. And I know the residents there are very concerned. When you have homes well in excess of 300, over $500,000 homes, and looking at a three-story apartment building, and I'm not trying to minimize anything, don't get me wrong, I mean, I thought, I was very impressed with everything that you were doing. And you said that you were putting in garages as a buffer. And you said that you were putting in garages as a buffer. How tall are those garages?
Just traditional, just traditional garages.
Just a regular garage?
If you don't mind, would you, would you mind bringing up the aerial map? And we can take a look at the lot itself and then move forward with the site plan? I would like everyone just to get another visual of the lot itself, and we can explain why it was divided the way it was with, then I believe it's the next one up. There you go, thank you. This is the entire twenty-one acres.
Right.
The owner themselves did not want to allow a lot split. Our interest was truly only on the eastern side. We decided to purchase the entire twenty-one acres. If you notice, there's some darker green in there. There is a stormwater detention area that's quite large. It's a natural stormwater coming in off of all of K dot, all the roads, everything within that area. And it's also catching stormwater from the neighborhood to the west. Some of that still flows down. So it made sense for us to just to develop the eastern side. What we're, now, if you wouldn't mind going to the site plan, and you can see on the left-hand side, which is a little cropped off, how large that detention pond really is. It pretty much takes over half of the width of that lot. And so what that does is that makes the largest majority of that lot undevelopable. Right now, we are having a wetland study and a site delineation study being prepared to determine, you know, is this a true wetland, can be disturbed or not? And that study is not complete yet, but in the interim, we are able to take a look at all of the grading. The stormwater runoff from this particular project will drain into the existing detention pond that is on the western side. The reason we're doing the wetland is to see, are we able to make it a little more compact? Because right now, it's just a natural storm detention pond. It's really not been one that's been created and man-made and maintained well enough. And so we're determining what we can do so that that does not continue to remain, I don't wanna use the word eyesore, but we want, rather it be something that's better manicured.
Okay.
So for the use of that lot, then, the only thing that we're considering right now is strictly on the eastern side.
Right.
So we have not even rezoned the western side. We're just leaving it ag for now, and we may never develop it. If we do, our only intention through our discussions would either be sell it to a single-family home developer, or we may put townhomes in. It's not suitable for apartments.
Okay. When you say townhomes, and I've heard the word seniors, your portfolio has been predominantly seniors. And then all of a sudden, I hear you say townhomes. What's your definition of a townhome? Because I don't see seniors in a townhome because of the stairs.
Well, it may not even be for Lytec housing. It may not be seniors. That is not even in our five-year radar to develop that western side. It's honestly not even something, right now, we're just land banking and we're just holding on to it.
Mm-hmm.
So I can't even promise that we will develop that western side.
Okay, help me understand your map.
Sure.
When you were talking about the wetlands, all of a sudden, you said three standalone, six-story, two, three-story buildings. I see a lot more there than that, so I'm not sure which, what is what on the map?
There are three, there are six buildings on the map. Each building is broken up of, I'm just gonna call them pods, for lack of a better word.
Okay.
They are, three pods make up one building. And the difference in between the pods is what's the breezeway, the walk-up portion of the stairs that they would walk up to enter their homes. And as I mentioned with regard to buffering the property with the garages, as you can see along the curve of where I seven or K seven and I seventy are, this property will be, is a little below grade, so you may be only seeing just the top rooftops or, you know, the upper portion of those garages. Really, that's as a noise buffer, which is primarily why we like the fact that we're able to.
Okay, when you said walk-up, so there are no elevators?
No, this is just a traditional three-story.
So this is basically, I'm not trying to insult you or anything else, this is basically low-cost housing for a lot of people.
Well, I appreciate and understand the misinformation.
No, it's not misinformation, ma'am, because the gentleman that was here.
Other street.
Okay.
As, for those of us that are Lytec developers, there are strict criteria guidelines with regard to materials being used as well as the energy efficiencies. And there's been proven information, and I can provide Kansas qualified allocation plan, which identifies that these projects are built better than a traditional market rate apartment that can charge three thousand dollars a month for rent. My, my criteria and the standards that we are held to as the developer for use of these federal funds exceeds anything that any plain developer that wants to walk in and say, I wanna build three hundred apartments in your city, and we're not asking for anything other than rezoning. They are, they are not held to, they're only held to your planning codes, where we are held to state codes and the use of federal funds. So I have a large project on the riverfront, five thirty-one grand, down in the market, marketplace. The quality of appliances that we use and the standards of materials, flooring and other things, we are held to higher standards. That project, some of those units are four thousand dollars or more a month. We build a better project with regard to the use of federal funds on these Lytec projects than we did on the materials in the five thirty-one grand. And I'm not diminishing the fact that that is a beautiful, quality project and location, it speaks for itself and it's full all the time. But we, no one governs us and says, hey, you have to have this. The city will come in through planning and zoning and say, you know, we want this architecture or we want, you know, it to, the exterior materials to look a certain way. But no one goes in and says, what kind of tile are you putting in? What kind of appliances are you putting in? What, how thick's your floor? How long's that going to last? We didn't have any of that, but I get held to tight scrutiny with regard to the inspections when we're using federal funds. So I apologize for not agreeing with the comment that says we're just building traditional Lytec. These are some, like what I call and I laugh about, some of these projects are like the Taj Mahal. What we're required to put in there is phenomenal, and it's better quality than the home that I live in, simply because of design standards and energy efficiencies.
Well, I appreciate that, and maybe it's unfortunate that the, your predecessor that was here before, when I asked the question, is this low-cost housing? And he went, well, it's affordable housing. He says, we call it affordable housing. That was a quote. So anyway, I apologize then if that's, you were the recipient of it and.
That's okay. That's, that's part of what I enjoy doing is, is just interpreting and explaining what we are held to with regard to our standards.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
On the, can you kind of explain the difference between affordable and low income? It seems like that's where a lot of the misinformation comes in, whether it crosses over into government housing versus?
Okay, there's a difference, well, affordable and low income are the same thing. The difference is whether it's a rent-based-on-income or it's a HUD Section Eight project or if it's a Lytec project. Lytec is low-income tax credit housing, which is a Section Forty-two program. This is an IRS program and not a HUD program. And so the difference is with the use of the tax credits, Section Forty-two, again, as I mentioned, we're held to higher standards because we are using federal funds with regard to the design. We are held to higher standards with regard to, everyone has to have a job. We do have some of our residents who may come in with, if they have assistance from a church or from a housing authority, whether it's a partial voucher or any voucher, but we ourselves are not a HUD-based project, and we do not have vouchers where anybody can just come in and pay thirty percent of their rent and not be able to justify what their source of income is. And so you have to have a source of income or you have to have a guarantor who will authorize and sign the lease indicating that they're going to be paying that rent. So the, the tenant selection criteria with regard to affordable, attainable, low income, that's all Section Forty-two.
And what are the mechanisms that, that offset the gap? Is that all federal funding, the gap in the, the rent paid? Is that, well, if they're paying thirty percent of the market rate, then who makes up the rest of that? Is that the state or the federal government or?
For rent?
How do you get paid?
How do I get paid? Or are you saying with regard to? Sure. The tax credit program was established so that us as developers could come in, and there's a nine percent program and there's a four percent program. But regardless, what happens, whether, which program it is, I make an application to Kansas Housing Resource, and I make an application for, for lack of a better word, a million dollars, we're just gonna do it even, a million dollars. And what I'm asking for then is a million dollars in four percent tax credits, which is unlimited, for a period of ten years. So what that does then is that brings in ten million dollars for equity in this project. In this case, we're a fifty-one million dollar project is what this one is projected at. So that only brings in, I would say probably twenty to thirty percent of the equity to finance our project. The rest has to come in the form of debt or a loan or soft money that comes through any grants we receive or anything that the city is able to provide or the county. So in this particular project, because it's a, what we call a four percent project, we reach out to the state and ask for tax-exempt bonds. And the reason we ask for those is because, as you know, the current interest rate environment right now, we're looking at perm rates that are in the seven and a half, seven, eight range. But if we can go tax-exempt, I might get a perm loan that's maybe seven, seven and a quarter. So what that does is that helps us finance the projects. If there are any gaps that fall into play with regard to financing the fifty-one million dollar project, that's where I reach out to the city and say, what economic incentives do you have? What tax credit programs do you have or anything that's available to help fund this? And so we reach out for every soft fund that's available in order to make this finance. And on these projects, because it is a bought project, at the current time, we are required to have fifty-five percent of our project be financed by debt. And so we try and reach out and get as much soft money as we can, simply because having a fifty-five percent or greater debt on this type of a project, it makes it a little more financially difficult to be able to provide the reduced rents at the thirty percent or the forty percent level. I know that's a big way around, but when I make an application for these tax credits, I myself and as our company, these are tax credits that can be used roughly dollar-for-dollar on your tax return. If you think of it as like your mortgage and you're able to write off the interest that's paid on your mortgage and you can take it as a deduction on your tax return, well, that's what these tax credits are. Whoever purchases these tax credits will buy them from us, because I, on an annual basis, we do, we build in nine states. We don't have enough loss necessary on our tax returns to be able to use all these tax credits. So we reach out to investors such as JP Morgan or Morgan Stanley, United Healthcare, U.S. Bank, Wells Fargo, and they, they do have the need to buy these tax credits to take losses on their tax returns. But what they do is, let's say I've got a million dollars, they're gonna offer me eighty-four cents on the dollar. That's roughly about the rate is right now, about eighty-four cents on the dollar. So we kind of do a swap. I'll give you my million dollars in tax credits, you're gonna give me eighty-four cents on the dollar, which would be the equity to help fund this project. So that's how we're funding or financing them. But the other part of the question, I thought I heard you say, is how do these residents go about making their rent? If they don't.
Now, I just, I didn't know if you were subsidized from what they pay versus what the market rate is.
There is no subsidy on this project whatsoever.
There's tax credits, there's a lot of different subsidies or soft, soft money, as you call it, but.
Yeah.
I am happy to hear that the traffic study was done. Thank you, staff, for getting that complete, 'cause I know a lot of the residents I'd communicated with about that, that is important. What are the, you said it's still in planning. What kind of sticking points are going on in planning right now?
The only thing, the architectural plans haven't been submitted yet. We are still working through the civil drainage to determine what we can do with the drainage on the western side, because we want to make improvements to the drainage that's on the western side, that detention pond. So we're really waiting to, for that report to get completed so that we can better design where's all the flow of the water that's gonna go in the west happen. We also, I'm waiting for civil design, because the city has asked us to tap into the water, put in a water meter and our own water tank up at the lift station. And so our civil engineer still needs to design that piece of it. So there, we will need to get a, I'm trying to think of what it is, a right-of-way easement from the developer or the owner who owns the land over there. So we're working on that piece of it that hasn't been completed. Once that's done, I need to reach out to the owner of the land, because we will be encroaching on his land. And then the architectural plans aren't quite complete yet. So the full set of plans for construction review have not been submitted yet.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Wood?
I'm interested in the pond. You sound like it's all taken care of, but I live at a lake and it sometimes goes over the edges. What's gonna happen with that?
The detention pond?
Yeah.
That's the study that we're having right now to see if we, if it can be buttoned up and straightened up and cleaned up, because right now, it's just, all it's doing is it's just catching normal rainwater. No one's really, it's just been there for years and no one's done anything with it. And so I guess I'm not understanding what's gonna happen to it.
Okay, that was my question, we're not understanding that.
No, no, I'm sorry, I stated that wrong. I thought I had had explained that we are doing this study to determine what we can do to clean that and straighten that up.
All right, which brings me to my other question. The plans are not thorough yet.
Which plans?
On all of this.
Everything on the eastern side is, everything on the eastern side is thorough and complete. The only piece that is not is determining what we can do with the detention pond, because we will retain ownership of, ownership of that. And so we will have to grant an easement for drainage for the property that's on the eastern side. So we will still own that. And then the other piece is the, the, or building and attaching to the lift station that's on the northwest corner up there by the highway, 'cause we don't own any of that land.
All right, so with this all said, will we be having another meeting to make a final decision on this?
Uh, no, it's already gone through the zoning process. There shouldn't be anything that'll come back, 'cause the plots will all go through, well, I don't know if the final plot, no, the final plot will come, it'll come in front of us, the final plot for the property. But as far as the project itself it goes, that'll, is all handled either at the Planning Commission level or by the Planning Department as far as project itself.
And looking at the total picture, how many new residents will this bring in?
For two hundred and four units? It could be up to a maximum, I would say maybe fifteen, twelve to fifteen hundred, if every single family has children. But in the case of, oftentimes, you may get a couple who wants a two-bedroom unit. And so I could say there are two people in a two-bedroom unit, or I could say there are four people in a two-bedroom unit. Up to a maximum, could be up to twelve hundred people.
Okay. That's all.
For now. Just right there.
Thank you. Thanks, Bobby Joe. You've done an eloquent job. Tonight, we're here to vote on what? The bonds? Whether we're gonna approve it?
So you have the option to approve a resolution if you disapprove of their bond financing. Otherwise, no action is required.
Okay. Well, I would like the option to disapprove.
We haven't, we'll get there.
All right, that's fine. Bobby Joe, at the very beginning, at the conception of wanting to buy the land a long time ago, right, 'cause we've gotten into some philosophical conversations here. The majority of the people that are behind you live in that community.
Correct.
They did their due diligence with the Planning Commission to put, to stop the effort of the selling of the land, not necessarily selling the land, but rezoning it to commercial, right? For all the, for all the right reasons. If, if you're, and not necessarily in their camp, but if you understand why they, they didn't want that to take place, right? And you guys are doing great. I mean, there's, you're developing, it sounds like there's a lot going on. I, I'm curious if you guys really did your research up there, because I'm, you know, there may be some caveats with, with that land and potentially with all the sewage and the water, right, and, and the runoffs and stuff and, right? You gotta, you gotta get, you gotta jump through a lot of hoops, just, right, that you haven't jumped through yet, but you're.
No, actually, the only study that is not complete is the one with regard to the existing detention pond. And that's what we're doing, is making it so that we can divert any excess runoff from wherever side that it comes from, north, east, west.
Sure, so do you have a plan for sewage?
Do I have a plan?
Yeah, is there, is there a plan in place for that? And let me, let me, can I say this?
Absolutely.
If you go to, I think it's a hundred and, south, one hundred and thirty-second Street and Kansas Avenue, certain times of the day, it smells like a sewage plant.
Oh, that.
Yeah, so there's, so when I, when I'm. Yeah, so there's, so when I, when I'm experiencing that, because I do live here in Bonner, right? I think that's a problem. And I, I'm not sure the development with a lot of water coming in and coming out or sewage coming out is, that could be a problem. It could be problematic, right? And I'm not really sure if we know that or not.
Well, that's what we rely on our civil engineer to have designed everything accordingly.
And they, they came back and they said there's no issues.
There are no issues.
Okay.
Mark?
Yes.
If I can interrupt a second, I'll let Amber kind of speak on this because there has been some areas in how they're working with it. Go ahead, Amber.
Right. When she came to us with the project, we did have sewer concerns. And so the line that she's talking about needing an easement for is a line up to our lift station so they can put in a holding tank.
Okay.
A metered holding tank, which means the, the sewer from this development would go there and then be metered outflow so that it doesn't affect our capacity issues.
Thanks, Amber, sure. Maybe they can mitigate the issue on a south one hundred and thirty-second and Kansas Avenue.
Yeah, that one's, that one's a little bit of a different reason.
It is, it's a different reason. I'm not sure who did the traffic report and I, I want to, everybody needs to be vetted in this. Try to go, where the McDonald's, we're in the weeds now, right? To where that McDonald's is at and try to come out of that parking lot with just the people that come from Lee Valley and Cedar Ridge. You gotta wait.
Understood. I've, I've experienced that too.
Amber's right about, everything we, you've been told is right, but there's more to it. Right in and right out on Seven Highway, that's great. Go left.
I reckon I should go south.
If you go left, right, you're down by the Chinese restaurant and there's no light, right? I think that's where it's going to dump you out. And that's already a mess. So there is going to be a lot of additional traffic in that area. And I, and I get it, you bought the land, you want to build this, right? Why should we be in the way of doing this? I think the reason we, we're in the way, or well, not all of us, maybe some of us, because we're here to represent our constituents. And so anyway, I just think there's probably a lot more we want to see through on this, but that's all I have to say. And thank you, I just-
Thank you.
Whatever happens, you're going to do well.
Thank you.
Ms. Blank?
Thank you for being here and for all of your information and being pretty detailed. I just, I have a few notes and then I just want to clarify from questions and discussions we've had. First, this is not section eight housing, correct?
It is not section eight.
This is not voucher based. This is you provide W twos, that you are working class and you are in a certain subset of class and just simply need affordable housing.
Correct.
Because as we all know, that's brought up a lot in our topics of conversation from citizens is how expensive the world is and everything is outrageous. So I just wanted to clarify on that because that's rumor on the street, that's hard to clarify that it's not section eight. When it comes to the traffic study, that was done by KDOT, correct?
I apologize, I don't know, Amber. Do you know who-
It was not done by KDOT, but they sign off on it.
They sign off, so KDOT does review-
Yes.
And approve, which I would assume KDOT knows what they're talking about in their field of study. I also just want to make sure that the city has no commitment to these bonds.
City has no commitment to those bonds whatsoever. Simply, this is the Tefra notification to be out for public hearing and city needs to recognize, I apologize, need to recognize isn't the right word, but so that this, every one of the city is aware that we are using bonds to finance a project within your community.
I also just want to clarify for questions that I've been asked, that Bonner Springs taxpayers are not fitting the bill for this project. That's also something that's been, I've been asked that question.
I would like to say I will take your money, but in this case, no individual taxpayers are contributing to this, the financing source of this project.
Great, thank you for clearing that up. In regards to the school district question, about six months ago, I talked to Dr. Jerry Abbott, who's a part of the Education Foundation at the high school, and just said, hey, would you do me a favor and reach out to admissions and ask, not only with development we're having here in Bonner, but also the Panasonic plant in De Soto, of what do our numbers look like and do we have the capacity to hold new student registers? And he came back with, yes, we do have the space for new families to move into Bonner Springs. So I know that question was asked, so I wanted to share that conversation that I had with Dr. Abbott. When it comes to seniors, seniors can apply to live here.
Yes, they can.
Okay. Because I know in Bonner Springs, we are at ninety-nine percent housing occupancy right now. And that is something I think that we're all passionate about is two things, bringing small families to Bonner and being able to accommodate for seniors. So I just wanted to make sure that both those people within that class qualified. I also think it's just really important to point out, I know there's a big stigma about low-income housing, but when I think of low-income housing, you know, I think of teachers and fire, our firemen, our police department and including our college graduates. In my discussion with Dr. Abbott, when I said, you know, what, how do you feel about new homes within that range being built and offered in Bonner? And he said, you know, one of the areas that we lack in when it comes to recruitment of teachers is one of the first questions they ask when looking to teach at Bonner Springs and invest in our community is, is there anywhere for me to live? And nine times out of ten, they have to say, we'll see if we can find you something, but we are at a ninety-nine percent housing occupancy rate. So for me, and I've had those same conversations with some individuals at the police department as well, of, I just said it'd be really nice if our police department and fire department could live where they serve to better get to know their community. And there's numerous officers who said, we would love to live in Bonner if housing was available and if it was affordable for us to do so. Last is, is there any incentives? This, another question I was asked, is there any incentives that the city of Bonner is a part of this project?
Yes, thank you for that question. This is, we are part of the neighborhood revitalization plan, the NP six. So based on that, we are eligible for seventy-five percent tax abatement for a period of five years.
Okay. And again, these were mainly questions that I've either had emailed or called about. So I do appreciate your time. And just to my fellow council members, I think it's just really important that if we're welcoming development and they go through the proper protocols and pay for tests and it's rezoned accordingly, I think we have to ask ourselves of what precedent are we setting for development and welcoming development to our community who are going above and beyond to make sure that they're going across the right process. And from what I can, I can tell, I went on your website today and could tell all the specific height requirements that you have for the integrity of your property and your building. So again, one thing we all always talk about in council is the economy and how can we help out our community and everything's so high-priced. I just have to say I'm in favor for working-class people who get up, do what they're supposed to do, who simply want to provide for their families and deserve to have somewhere to live and not be outpriced, including our seniors. So thank you for all the work that you and your team have done up to this point. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Blank?
I'll echo what Councilwoman Blank said and others here as well. I don't have anything more to add from what she said, but I've been on the website looking at some of the other projects and properties that you have. And I'm curious if you have any examples, so what, is there one of these properties that might look close to what the ones in Bonner Springs might look like? Because none of them, to me, look like eyesores. None of them look like anything I'd object to coming in on K seven and looking at or living next to or knowing people who live there. They are very, very attractive. They're well-made, they look very clean. I know that the best pictures are always going to be the ones on the website, but I'm curious, is there a property you know of that will be similar to this one that I can take a peek at really quickly and in what state?
Right now, Yukon, Oklahoma is one that's just finishing under construction. Mills, Wyoming, or yeah, Mills, Wyoming, which is part of Casper. Otherwise, I don't have any market-
The senior villas and the other ones that I've seen on here look amazing as well. They look like places I'd like to live. These apartments in, that look close to the elevation you were showing on here in Yukon, that was the one I had pulled up, look fantastic. They're nothing that the city of Bonner would not be proud to have. So I just wanted to add that for anyone who wants to go take a peek and see if you would think that you would have a problem living next to these apartments or whether we're just talking about the people who are going to be living in them. Just curious about that, so that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. Mike, Ms.-
Good evening.
Good evening.
Couple of things, I appreciate you being here. You right off said walk up at least twice, maybe three times. No, is there no elevator in these?
No, these are just traditional walk-ups with open breezeways.
Okay.
So there, there are stairwells, as I mentioned, through each one of those pods. So each building will have two sets of stairwells.
Initially, months ago, when, months ago, when I was asking questions about this, when we were getting ready to vote on it for the very first time, I was asked that question and they said, yeah, it's, we'll have an elevator in it. So because of seniors, I was very interested in having that elevator in there. Now there's not, okay?
So I apologize for the misunderstanding because it's always been me that's been the presenter and these have never had elevators programmed into the design or development of these projects.
Okay, hang on, now, would you say that again? I couldn't hear what both of you go with.
Different property. It's a different property they were talking about with the elevator? The one by-
I've asked it on every property.
The ones that you're talking about that they said had an elevator are the ones that are on the other side? That's not this one?
I asked on this one when we talked about it because it was going to be like three hundred and some odd units.
Not our project.
It's on that property up-
Density doesn't allow for three hundred units on this site.
Well, that's one reason I was objecting to it in the first place. At any rate, now it's down to two hundred. And at two hundred, the way I'm thinking about, well, that's anywhere between two hundred and three hundred and fifty cars coming out of there.
Potentially one car for each resident or each unit at, at a minimum, yes.
About one and a half.
Yes.
Okay. So that's a lot more traffic that's added to this area down here that's already at a congestion level. Whatever company did this research in the traffic, I disagree with what they're saying because I see what's already there. Unless there's more lanes added, I don't see how this is going to work very well without causing disruption with our patrons that are already here. So I'm very interested in seeing that problem solved before you would move on. Because of those, the traffic patterns, we, traffic situation we already have, adding another three hundred cars to it is detrimental unless we add more ways for your people to get out of where they are and disperse them more quickly into the traffic some other way. Is there going to be a manager on site?
Yes, sir, there will be two managers on site on a daily basis.
Okay. And that will be there in perpetuity?
Yes.
Okay, because this is one thing I've been worried about, about some properties we've had in the past. They'll have managers there, but then as time goes on, the tro, the property seems to go down as what people look at and expect it to be. It wasn't near like it was to begin with. And so, and this is maybe one thing we need to address as this city is to come up with codes that we can look at projects that are in place and ones that are going in place so years down the road, we can kind of control what the outcome is there and what the quality of the property is at that time. So yes, I grant you, the, the buildings that you're going to build are probably going to be great, okay? I'm worried about twenty, thirty years down the road. And if we're still managing those with the idea that this is still going to remain at this level, it needs to because so many times we see that it doesn't happen that way. And so I'm very interested in finding out how that's going to work out on the maintenance end, if you're going to have people there that's going to be watching out for, well, is the carpet wore out now and we need to replace that? Is there tile coming up in the hallways? Are there just small things, you know, that need constant paint replacement, windows, all those things that tend to deteriorate and kind of be left unattended? And they don't belong to anybody that's there as they would in a homeowner? And so I worry a lot about that and I'm, I want you to answer some questions for me along that line.
Absolutely.
How that's going to be taken care of twenty years down the road, thirty years down the road? Because like you said, you're got, you're going to be out of it in ten years.
Out of this project in ten years? No, we hold the project for a minimum of fifteen and then we commit to extended use, land use programs within our land use restriction agreement. So the project will remain in the tax credit program for thirty-five years. And if you don't mind, I would be happy to answer some of the questions and concerns that you have.
Sure.
As all of you may know, every one of these tax credit programs are competitive. Even the four percent side is a competitive side when you're trying to couple that with state tax credits. And so oftentimes, there may be years where we don't get a project in Kansas or any other state. And the reason why we believe this to be the case is our projects come in at a little higher pricing than other developers who will come in and, for lack of better terms, just, you know, a race to the bottom to see who can build it the cheapest. That way they can get tax credits. And the reason that we don't have that philosophy is because we hold these projects. This is our portfolio and this is our reputation. And this is, I want, I want to be proud of this project in twenty years just as well as I am the day that it gets built. And so because they come in so expensive, we build with better quality materials, we hold ourselves to that. And with regard to design, we, we simply don't want someone to drive by the property and say, oh, that's an, that's an affordable housing project, that's one, because I could drive by and pick them out. That's how bad they look, some of them do. And so we definitely take pride in the construction, both interior and exterior. And with regard to management, I fully respect and understand your concerns of that. With having a property of this size, we will have two full-time managers and a part-time leasing person that's there on the weekends, every weekend. Manager on a property of this size, I'm sorry, maintenance, we're going to have a minimum of two maintenance men, which are full-time, as well as a porter. The advantage of us creating our own management company is we can, we know immediately if something's in disrepair, it needs to be taken care of now. Because if something gets left for months at a time, it just creates more disrepair throughout the property. And so we absolutely focus on if something needs taking care of. We enter every single one of these units on a quarterly basis simply to check the batteries in the smoke detectors and change the filters. We do that. We do not put that on our resident. And so that's where we can take a look at, not that we do a thorough inspection of everybody's units on a quarterly basis, but our manager or maintenance ends up in that property to say, hey, we see something's happening here. And so we're able to jump on that and repair it immediately. And with regard to the exterior and the grounds, I don't want to drive by a property that looks like an eyesore. I'm a homeowner, just like everybody else. I don't want to live by something that's going to look terrible. And the concern is always, oh, that's a, a detainable housing project and now my values of my home are going to go down. Or they're not going to take care of it and it's going to look like trash in five years. No, that is not what any of our properties look like. You could take a look at any of the properties in any one of the states that we build it and you'll never be able to tell that they're attainable housing. So that's, again, why we created our management company, is to take care of our property and our asset. It remains within our portfolio.
Very good. If need be, then would you be able to maybe help out with the, the traffic patterns we have here with these, to help add lanes and whatever or more exits to this project?
At the present time, the ta, the traffic impact analysis indicated that that was not a necessity.
Well, okay, but I disagree with the traffic study. I, I live here, I can see what's going on. That's all I have for now.
I have another question. I'm sorry, I meant to ask if there is a decision tonight to oppose the bonds, which is what we're here for.
if there is a decision tonight to oppose the bond, which is what we're here for, what happens to the project? And then second, Mr. Mayor, if the citizens can still speak, because I don't want to minimize your guys' concerns, that is not what I'm trying to do here. But I do want to understand, so if this project falls through, they move out, someone's doing something with this property, what is it that you guys would like to see? And if it is residential housing, how do we do that when we can't do that now? There's land that's been available and unable to be sold, unable to be, you know, they're not able to get people who can afford to buy plots for these houses. So what would you want to go there instead? I'm genuinely asking. Because I would see, the way Bonner goes, guys, what are we getting, self-storage? What are we getting? I'm not sure, like, if we don't put something there, what goes there?
Mr. Johnson wants to come speak. Since she addressed you, I'll go ahead and let you speak again, Mr. Johnson.
Is it okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, you know, senior housing would be fine, I would not object to that. With this, a lot of it really is traffic. The retention pond, do you know how many, could I ask a question? How many parking spaces are you? And there's 203, so 350?
What's the difference between seniors, traffic-wise, and apartments, traffic-wise?
Seniors just don't get out as much, I mean, honestly, I don't believe.
Not as much, they still get out, these seniors get out.
Well, yeah, I am too.
I don't know, no, if I stand up for him.
I'm retired too, so.
Hey, Ron, I'm right here. We get out at different times, how's that? Maybe that's a better statement, rather than seven to four, eight to five?
There's a little over, at 100, 204 units, there's one and a half parking stalls per unit, so there's a little over 300, not including the garages.
Uh-huh. So yeah, and maybe I'm misspeaking, but what if there's more? What if a unit has six people but five of them drive, what do they do?
That's why we have ample parking. And often that, the count of the garages is not included in the free parking that's on service.
I see, okay.
So oftentimes you'll have residents who may rent one or two garages.
I see, okay. But yeah, and as far as retention pond, I mean, you have this, you're putting up a slab of concrete. You're going to have a lot of oil to heat cars. Rainwater is going to go right down where it absorbs into the soil right now. It won't be doing that. Now, you can say, well, if there was senior housing, you would have somewhat, but it probably wouldn't be to that scale, I wouldn't think. Or residential housing, you don't have that to that scale, you don't have as much concrete. So yeah, you're going to have a lot of runoff of concrete down to that pond. And I totally believe that these will look great, but I also have seen great, and then you go by five years and the blinds are torn down and it just looks a mess and you can't touch the residents that's in it. You can't evict them and then you're sitting there looking at it, so.
I do know that's true. Is that true, that they can't be evicted?
Oh, any resident can be evicted for property.
And also, I know housing developments also have similar problems with age and with time. I mean, neighborhoods deteriorate, this happens, but I'm not sure I understand.
Yeah, I don't, I just don't think we're seeing it the same way, so.
No, that's okay, I just really want to make sure that I understand where you're coming from, I do, because you live there. I also have a home, I also live in neighborhoods, you know, with a diverse economic array around me. I don't want to minimize your concerns, I really did want to hear what you guys would like to see there instead.
Well, yeah, I mean, I can't really say we want what we want there. I think if there was senior housing, I don't think.
I mean, ideally, nothing, because it looks great, right, like at the field, but yeah.
Nothing, yeah.
Right.
But yeah, senior housing or something like that, because honestly, I think they take care of things better. I think anything, anything you own, you take care better. So.
That makes sense, I can get right there.
I really believe that. And like I said, there's going to be a lot of runoff, that's a lot of concrete and it has to go somewhere.
That makes sense.
Right now, it's going just into the ground and some of it goes to that pond. But you're going to have substantially more, so.
Matt, just real quick.
Yeah.
I still have the question that you needed to answer as well.
We need to get back to our regular discussion.
Well, since he's here, please, just kind of back up a little bit, because I need a peace of mind of this, because I'm willing to go to the sword for you guys. But if we back up, the ship has already sailed. These good folks own the land. And I don't want to bat on them on every turn. And so when you come up and you're like, hey, maybe retirement-type housing or whatever, right? So you're opening that idea, you're creating a path. And I needed some confirmation with that. But I'll say this, I want to, I would, I think, it's pretty unanimous up here that the traffic report is, I don't think it's on by any means. And I'm sorry, Bobby Joe, I go, I live in the area and we're in there and it's a mess, right? And everybody in this room outside of you will tell you that, less gentleman in the back, I'm not sure where he lives. But it, traffic is an issue, so we're going to dump more traffic. It potentially put a lot more traffic into that, right? So maybe we, you know, so we pass it, so if this thing goes through, we're going to have to definitely, at some point in time, we're not naive to this, we're going to have to give attention to the way the streets are designed and how to be able to facilitate all of that traffic. Because you can turn, right turn in, right turn out, or whatever that was, but you got left turns to make, which means it takes you down to the main, well, it's Kansas Avenue and that's where things get really sticky, okay? So any rate, but you guys are aware that something's going to end up going there at some point in time. And just by the way, so you're only talking about 11 to 12 acres that you're going to develop? Because when you start going west, I mean, if you go out and you look at that land, it goes down, you got the pond and all of that stuff, there's some real challenges there. So that, who knows when that land would be developed, if it ever is, right, in our lifetime? So anyhow, thanks for coming out.
Sure, here, thanks, you guys.
If, I might go ahead and put a few things in, it might ask, no, please come up.
Any additional questions that I can answer?
Any additional questions that I can answer?
I'd ask the question about what happens if the bond is?
Oh, if the bonds don't go through, that's our primary source of financing, then it ends up becoming our perm loan. We use those bond funds through construction. Once the project's been built and it's fully leased, then we convert to a perm loan. And so that is our permanent financing for the project for a period, an amortization of 30 years. And I would like to make a comment, because I know I've heard this often, is who's eligible to live in these particular projects? As we, as every community, we are reliant on the people who work at the grocery stores, the people who work at Walmart, the people who run all the restaurants, the people who work at the banks, secretaries, teachers. My husband is a fireman and I can tell you, he does not make a lot of money. So we are targeting just working people. We aren't targeting those that are going to be lazy and section 8 vouchers and they have no job and they're going to sit there and let their kids run rampant. That's not what we're hoping for. And there are many different terms with regard to Lytec housing, whether it's low-income tax credit housing, whether it's affordable housing, whether it's attainable housing. In my mind, and I view this differently, I view it as transitional housing. And the reason I say that is because many years ago, I was a single mom with three children and I had no child support. I qualify to live in these units. And that's what plenty of our residents are using this as a stepping stone. They want to live in the area that they're working and potentially, they're working on getting better in their employment or working towards a career goal. But right now, this is what they can afford to live until they get that better job, until they can afford to put a down payment down on a home. And we all know with this environment right now, people aren't going to be buying homes for some period of time, or at least I talk to my adult children and it's not even on their radar. Because they know, I mean, I'm at an interest rate that's below 3%. If I were to go out and buy a home now and you're looking at a 7% rate, my payment would more than double. And so I say to my older kids, now is not the time to buy a home, just stay exactly where you're at. So in my mind, and I truly believe this, this is more of a transitional piece to help those families work up and do better goals for themselves. So I apologize, that's just my little spiel on I qualify for this. And it's helped me, I fortunately owned my own home at the time, but I definitely looked into living in this type of housing when I had my kids.
I have just one question. On sewage, that's on your project's dime, correct?
Yes, it is.
Because I know that's a concern that we've had is, I know that area is at capacity. So you are financing for a tank in the lift station?
Yes, we've set aside a budget of about $320,000, that's what it's going to cost us to provide all of that attaching up to the lift station with the tank and the metering and everything else. So that is absolutely in our budget.
Okay, I just wanted to note that it's important that you guys are doing what's asked of you based off the studies that are being received from the engineers. I know we all don't agree with KDOT or KDOT signing off on it, but I do think it's important to remember that they went through the steps and assuming it came back, the traffic study came back on the other shoe of you need to put in these specific requirements that you would do so, correct?
If mandated, absolutely. And I'd like to point out also, and Amber may have more to add to this, we are attaching to the lift station that's up on the northwest side over there. What this does also is this provides an availability for the gentleman that owns all of the land, because part of that area up on the northwest side is not developed. We don't own that, another gentleman does and was planning a single-family home subdivision. Right now, there wasn't enough capacity. He's able to now tap into the new lines that we will be able to put in if and when he chooses to finish that neighborhood development or if he sells.